Hello and welcome to the East Lampeter Township Public Meeting. All participants are now informed that this meeting is being recorded. This meeting is also being offered virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferencing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the internet or by calling in by phone. The public is also able to observe the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website. Please be reminded that this meeting is being video and audio recorded and will be posted to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. The meeting will now proceed with the chairman calling the meeting to order and identifying all other members present in the meeting room and those joining the meeting via Zoom. The chairman will then confirm those members joining by Zoom can be heard.
Good evening, welcome to the Monday, October 20th Meeting of the East Lampeter Township Board of Supervisors to rise and join me in our place to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got agendas in the back and signing sheets. Joined in the room tonight by Mr. Gallagher, Vice Chair Thornton, Rutt. Mr. Meyer is absent from speaking. Any public comment or any non-agenda items that come on the agenda? We'll do plenty of time to address that and then we also have public comments at the end. Are there any public comment for non-agenda items? Anything online? Yes, sir.
John Keeler, I'm at Sydney Road. Recently, the fall to his property as many storms were in there carrying up the front road. I had some complaints about the way they had left it. I notified Sam. Sam got back to me very kindly. Said it wasn't their responsibility, it was a PennDOT permit and see PennDOT, they notified PennDOT. Within four or five months, all those crew, wherever the funk was out there, doing some patching. It's better, it's not great. I understand you can't do anything, but I want to show my appreciation for what was done. Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully we can stay in touch with PennDOT. Try to keep the pressure on. Yes, ma'am.
Three five Mount Sydney Road. Susan Snyder. Once again, I'm talking about the speed limit. There should not be tractor trailers on that route. When there's two tractor trailers side by side, they can barely make it. And the wide loads, many times they don't have anyone in front of them to warn that the wide load's coming. And if you're on the road or you're out milling, you're in trouble. And you guys are creating a very unsafe environment for residents of Whitmer. They can't get across the street to get their mail, they have to cross. The Amish lady said she's having a terrible time. People can't walk along the road because of the speed. They're not going thirty-five. It's not thirty-five. It's fifty plus. That's what the speed on Mount Sydney Road is. And now you're adding all those other homes and that's the purpose of meeting here is because I saw that in the paper on Sunday that you were gonna do something with the E.G. Stolzfuß and I wanted to hear what that was, but while I'm here, I'm just commenting on the safety. You have no concern for the safety of the residents of Whitmer. And that village has been there for a long time and I've lived there sixty-eight years. And I've seen major changes and nothing's being done to improve it. The roads not being monitored sufficiently. I see East Lampeter Township sitting up in Heller's Church parking lot more than I see along the road doing traffic stops. So someone is going to get killed. I'm telling you. And when that happens, you can think back to what I said.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, with that, we'll move right into our consent agenda. We've got
But I just may just say, on that, a comment like that, we definitely will talk to staff about what our limitations are and if there's any ideas or other things that are happening, but I appreciate you sharing that.
We mile per hour platform again, they did that periodically. But with that construction down there, there were twenty-minute waits for me to get out of my driveway. The flagger was not moving traffic through. And it was gridlocked. And neighbors would say, oh, when they come up over the hill, they're speeding and there's a gridlock down there. And we were just waiting for someone to rear end down there. It's a miracle no one's rear-ended yet. They didn't keep the traffic moving at all.
Okay. So the items A through F. And all these are printed out in the agenda, so I'm not gonna read through each one. We've got our agenda minutes, our minutes. We've got some time extensions and approval to pay invoices.
I'm gonna motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through F.
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Gallagher, second by Mr. Rutt. Any board comment or public comment? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both your extensions and motions passes. Now we move on to item five, informal discussion on rezoning the property along Mount Sydney Road, E.G. Stolzfuß.
Good evening. I'm Peter Wertz, I'm an attorney with B.B. Swallows and Eric with me tonight, Brian Bull. I'm yeah, with E.G. Stolzfuß Land LLC. This is the property that's E.G. Stolzfuß's offices for its custom homes and remodeling division. It includes two tracks totaling six point four. And both of these cars are located in the township's ag zoning district, but are directly joined by land in the village residential zoning district. E.G. Stolzfuß is in the process of consolidating its operations at different location and is desiring to rezone the current property from its ag status to the adjacent VR zoning district so that it can be developed for residential purposes. At this point, we're anticipating the creation of ten lots that will be served by cul-de-sacs street. The existing single-family home on the property will be retained on its own lot, but the remainder of the buildings that currently are in existence would be demolished in connection with the project. In terms of our planning justifications, again, the property directly adjoined lands in the VR district that are developed for residential purposes, this would be a logical continuation of existing zoning uses. Property had been joined on two sides by CB School Campus. And although the property is currently zoned for agricultural uses, present use as an office demonstrates the agricultural classification is no longer reflecting the actual or the intended use of the property. The ag district's purpose is to protect a prime agricultural purpose. Again, that's no longer appropriate given the fact that the property is used for non-agricultural uses. The property is located along and accessible via Mount Sydney Road that is classified as a major collector road by the CB Comprehensive Plan and again is immediately adjacent to the village growth boundary identified. The property will be serviced by public sewer. We presented this proposal informally to the township's planning commission. This meeting on two fourteen began for deliver some informal feedback. The planning commission, obviously not making a formal recommendation, but they did indicate informal support for this project and this proposed rezoning. So we are now for the board requesting also feedback with respect to this project and the board indicates that this is something they would be interested in seeing and have no objection to at this point in the process. We would move forward with a formal petition application process for the rezoning.
Questions?
I'm here, is there any discussion with the determinant they would ever want to acquire that property or have a need for that property?
There has not been a discussion with the school district, final.
So I think I would probably I do also have aerial exhibits and zoning map excerpt. To the extent the board wants to provide convenience in doing this, then we may have that in the packet. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
You did say the residents would stay with the farm, would that come down? Make room? There would be no tie-in, I mean, obviously I have plans for this, but the development that's currently under construction, would there be any shared access? Or would they all have their own access up on Mount Sydney?
Several access, yes.
Was, is there a reason that rezoning wasn't brought up as you were going into that project?
I think it was a timing issue, but when it was timing at that, at that point in time, the consolidation of our operations was not formalized, so we weren't aware that the office was going to be moving locations and then this would be an option.
That he'll be a part of it?
I believe it would be, we would certainly follow, you know, this would be the first part of the process. If the rezoning were to go through, obviously we would have to process a formal land development, plan and obtain any necessary zoning relief since this project would certainly be coming before this board of supervisors again in different capacities at least one more time.
So with the last plan or the neighboring property, there was a question and comment by this board about connections to the school district, so that was talkability between the development and the school district. I would suspect there would be those questions again.
As part of that project, there is a full connection down Mount Sydney on the school side in front of this subject property at four seventy-four.
The school district property on both the west and the north of this property.
Correct.
You're saying ten single-family homes or multifamily units?
There are these single-family homes. So there would be the existing residents and approximately an acre and a half on that and then nine additional lots for ten.
Never not a commercial office, the existing residence or office.
Residence charges.
How many units on the other property?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
That project's already at that construction phase, right?
Right.
Timing is pretty unfortunate, ideally we'd connect those and wouldn't have to have two more dead-end cul-de-sacs running off of Mount Sydney. Being able to connect all that frontage with sidewalks would be, would be much better for that street though. That's what we'd like to see is at least get all the way up to south view at some point.
I think there's a brick sidewalk at the landscaping companies on the west side, correct?
Sort of at the top.
Yeah. There's Amish property.
And they'll have these two parcels in there.
Yeah, I agree, I think some sidewalk would be ideal because I see it, I drive the way home every day and it is very I see a lot of Amish kids trying to ride their scooters down the road and it is very dangerous, so.
Well, you've heard the feedback here, you know, anything we can do during construction? Things that you discover as you're moving forward, I mean, that would certainly be something we'd be interested in. And so I'm traveling on it just about every day also and I totally understand the issues there. Being tailgated regularly because you're not going as fast as other people want you to go, but but really that, yeah, that access and safe walking, that would be ideal.
What are your thoughts gentlemen about the rezoning portion of this?
Certainly consistent with what we have in that area, it is a village, you know. Well, strongly about that. And since it's not really active agriculture, it's, it's a bit consistent with what we are trying to do and that is no ag property to be, you know, taken up for development, but develop properties that are already sort of signatured into that of that area, so.
I agree with Mike. Thank you.
I think it's consistent with the village there having given it an existing non-conforming issues.
And I'm sorry, Joe, were you referring to recreational finishes?
Right, there was, if you recall, the board discussed a trail connection because the trail at the school is directly behind this property and the property that is currently under construction. If I recall correctly, there were some significant topographic issues with the property that's currently under construction.
Well, there's a drop, that's adjacent to the, what, the bowl field they call it?
There was, correct, and there's a stormwater basin at the rear. That's where access to at least on the one side of that parcel and then somewhere to turn up seven, but either differential.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, ideally school district have to agree, but I'd love to see connection from the school district out to the road, not just through school property. They're not gonna want it, but they might want it, but that's, I think, the more connection we have off of Mount Sydney Road and in and out of it, the better it's gonna be rather than having everyone having to go one direction.
As part of the development of four fifty-eight, we've run into along four seventy-four, we'll receive a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm. So there is room back there if the school were to can connect, there's a, there's a field beyond there and then they have like their really old obstacle course. That, now you take your life into your hands. Well, there's plenty of room there for a trail connection, it's plenty flat enough. That's what I would love to see is, is more connection if it is built out to actually connect into that bowl.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
Other questions for the app or the informal discussions? Right? What's based in public comments in fact at this point?
Eric, five Mount Sydney Road. Ten more homes. What about water? What about the infrastructure? You put a housing development behind me? You put what, fourteen houses down there and now you want to add an additional ten? Where's the water coming from? We had neighbors that had to drill for wells. Where's the water coming from? If they want to put ten more houses, then they should have to put water in. I'm sorry. You're planning all this growth with no infrastructure growth. You can't put, keep putting homes out without water. And people don't conserve water. They just let it run. They take showers and let it run. Well, if you've ever had your well build, you are, which I have, it's not pleasant and it's expensive. And with all these homes born in, I am concerned about the waters.
Yes, sir.
This is looking um, this easy, like you say, ag zoning. You're looking at the surrounding area and saying, well, it's no actually, if I was saying, well, my farm has read across through the golf course, there's gonna have five hundred units. You're probably not going to live in a zoning, I guess. Well, I thought that East Lampeter is a little bit slow on messing with the ag, with the ag zoning. This is how it works and it is a question that I would have, I'll save it for the end, but with, is literally just you five folks have the ability to change zoning? Like down at Rockefeller Square, when it was changed from commercial to high-density residential, was it literally just five people? That, that could do that, that means this is how it works a little bit.
Now, process, they'd have to actually go through an approval process and file the paperwork, get a lawyer, draft the pieces, we'd have to have a hearing on that, we'd have to notify the public, our neighboring municipalities. But yeah, the zoning is controlled by, by this board of five people to make any changes. This is one where it's out prior to the school districts going in and them expanding their campus, then this, this had farmland around it. Now it's an island of ag zoning and there's a commercial building on it and it's surrounded by residences in the school district. So there's no access to even, even if you knocked all the buildings down and it'd be very difficult to, to farm that because the parcel's not big enough and you have no access to it. So this is, this is one where you, you would call it, you're correcting the zoning island. Because it's completely surrounded.
With all this growth, is East Lampeter gonna bump up their police coverage? I don't want to have this experience again where at two thirty in the morning, I had someone knock on my door and open my screen door at two thirty AM. Was very frightening, I lived by myself and I was not locking my doors. And who knows, I mean, is East Lampeter gonna be patrolling more?
So we have the police coverage to handle. We've handled much more call volume than we're currently handling. So our current patrol cites that, but we are actively continuing to maintain our level of service with our police force. Seeing significant amounts of growth relative to our current population levels. It may feel that way, but the numbers aren't quite there and as we've increased our population, our call volume of and, and resource pull on our officers has actually been going down. So the last three, four years, our call volume, this is on the decline. And there's some things that I would love to be able to regulate, like Mount Sydney Road, but it's a state road. We can't regulate that, we can, we can ask for a traffic study and if they do a traffic study, they're gonna raise the, most likely will raise the speed limit. I'm not lower it and then it means it's more difficult for our officers to actually enforce the speed limit because
They need to control more. They need to control.
And we also don't regulate water usage from wells. That's, that's, uh, ruled by this here.
You don't put a development where there's no water, public water.
We do pretty regularly, yes.
I know, you did behind me. Yeah, you can't keep doing that, where do you think the water's gonna come from?
It either comes from a big well that's pumped out to a bunch of houses or a bunch of small wells, but all coming from pretty much the same place. Any other public comment or questions? That is, uh, item five. Thank you. Next up, we have no items under, I have six, I have seven is zoo business. I have seven A resolution regarding a sewer planning module for Texas Roadhouse at two three one seven Lincoln Highlands. Is there anything for this item?
I think so, the board approved the expansion of the Texas Roadhouse at Chair July meeting and that includes twenty-six additional seats for customers and therefore additional sewer capacity. As the DEP, E.A.D.E.P requires that the applicant go through the sewer planning module.
And a motion to to approve the resolution sewer planning module for Texas Roadhouse. I have two hundred and seventeen Lincoln Highlands East. Motion by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Gallagher. A public comment, board comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post your extensions, the motion passes. Next, another, item seven, be resolved sewer planning module for Lancaster Archery, twenty-one ninety-five Old Philadelphia Pike.
Not in this application, however, the, the applicant is aware that this will take some time. They'll maybe be in there or wishes to do that this process. This is for the inauguration of lots and then expansion of Lancaster Archery at its current location.
To improve the resolution to move forward would be additional sewer capacity for Lancaster Archery at twenty-one nine, twenty-one ninety-five Old Philadelphia Pike.
Second. First by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Rutt. Board comment or public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post your extensions, the motion passes. Item seven C, sewer resolution for sewer planning module for Croft County Intercepter Crossing Extension.
Container and our container is looking to upgrade the interceptor through to the city Grafton Pumping Station. That takes them from East Lampeter under the Conestoga into Lancaster Township and then to the Grafton station. So this is going from a twelve-inch line to an eighteen-inch line.
Right? I think they needed to increase it.
Yeah, they're increasing capacity and flow.
Motion.
Motion to approve the resolution for Dart Container. Will the training model for the Grand Interceptor Crossing Extension.
Motion by Mr. Rutt, second by Mr. Thornton. Any more discussion, questions, public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post your extensions, the motion passes. Item seven D, point twenty-five dash seventeen Greenfield Road. Land development plan at one forty-three Pittney Road.
Good evening, Cheryl Love with the LA Group, I'm here representing Greenfield Road. See, um, this site is Sydney Road. Um, currently, the portion that you see there is northwest in the corner of the road. So what we're doing will be for a switching improvement. Um, so off of Pittney Road, we've been working with PPL on their standards following through with their requirements. And so there will be a travel drive coming in. Spring cleaning, a brief event, are moving vehicles that would have access would be PPL once a week at most would have a maintenance person come and check on functioning, making sure everything's functioning properly out there. Uh, they do have current facilities and easements across this land now on the eastern side that goes down and feeds a substation in the lower right corner of the plan up there. Um, so this improvement was part of their long-range planning as well for uh, services to the community and to the community, the zoning agency. Um, also they were supportive of the center. Evidence on the other properties, various gas stations, stuff of that, switch yard. The PPL would have the switch yard at the top of that plant and in the lower portion of that plant feeds electricity into um, everything is gated, fenced. Um, per PPL's requirements, there would be a ten-foot gate, a fencing system around their actual switch yard from the state east end line and that's approximately a hundred and sixty feet in from the roadway itself from Pittney Road there. Uh, there would be new stormwater improvements, there's a basin shape shown on the left side of the plan there. Uh, there would be new stormwater improvements, uh, there's a basin shape shown on the left side of the plan there. Uh, so that would be an all stormwater uh, basin, otherwise it's basically a grass site gravel. Um, and it's there for the uh. Uh, for the electricity improvement. We've worked through most of the review comments. Um, through the David Miller review letter, uh, dated on the twenty ninth of September. Uh, we did meet this uh, late summer also with your staff. Portraits of this plan. So we do have a number of agreements that we are still working through. Uh, the uh, park and rec. Be in lieu of, uh, we've worked through that agreement and post the monies that relates to that. Uh, there'd be the developer agreement with financial security, uh, gets to be. Agreed to, and also aderural agreement, we're requesting. Uh, the improvements along Pitney Road, we have shown and demonstrated that they can be provided. Uh, within the design of these plans. Uh, but uh, we're asking to do a deferral agreement for a little bit. Grass, uh, five foot grass strip and a five foot uh, concrete sidewalk. Until such time as you as supervisors would deem appropriate to be installed at some point. Um, so that is, we do have uh, some language from a deferral agreement, but again, we would work with your solicitor. To the satisfaction uh, of those areas. There are a number of waiver or modifications that we would also be seeking. Uh, they're outlined in the review letter, but generally. Um, and then the next several items in the review letter relate to. Um, a waiver of plan scale. The plan sheet previous to this was to show the total property quantity was a hundred thirty feet, just to get a context for the whole property. That was an overall plan, um, that otherwise the plans are consistently planned scale of that one sheet. Kind of involves us into a waiver for plan scale. Um, we've shown most of the significant features within two hundred feet of the property. Uh, however, there are some um, that we do not have on the plan themselves, we have provide topography. We did provide property, uh, properties themselves, property internames. Uh, buildings, property lines, et cetera, are shown uh, within two hundred feet of the property. Um, a waiver for pre-treatment stormwater, uh, that relates to, and we did uh, work with DMA. Given that it is gravel and basically the last. No real parking lots, no real. A pretty clean property, uh, in what they look. So, uh, not to provide pretreatment, but just to allow. Uh, whatever stormwater does. And then another that relates to stormwater will be for the loading ratios on the day, and then again. We did speak to Scott. So, um. I think those are the highlights, we can certainly answer any other questions. Uh, that you may have, um. But it's it's pretty straightforward plan.
What's this oriented to the emergency services?
I'm sorry.
Opened to emergency services for reviews.
And those, those letters, I believe, were part of our prior submissions. Um, I think your prime captain or chief had. Recently, one of them had changed, uh, recently, I. Tara, I know we forwarded those. We also have a police, your police. One thing I will say, um. When we met with Clara, we were obviously, uh. Very in agreement with controlling access to this site. And we do have gates at the front portion just in from, from the roadway and then another gate at the back area here. The concern is we don't want through traffic uh, from this city side through this side, over into emergency situations. Um, something happens out at Greenfield Road, it is the only other alternate way to access. Uh, but we did, uh, we did receive uh, from your police, uh. Group, uh, a support, uh, approval letter and also from fire.
I'm I'm just concerned that. Our volunteer firefighters may not have the equipment or apparatus to deal with the substantial size of substation. Or switch station.
The other thing, um, what they did ask in that letter where they did, um. Basically voiced their their general approval was, uh, the ability to, um. Do some training or, uh, some special, um. Services that relates to that, I know Lancaster City, freight department, man on charge as another uh, server. Uh, and backup response have all asked that, uh, and our client has been more than. Uh, willing to to work with that, and uh, we've been doing the same conversations with, with the city, so Tara, we can certainly. Um, more than open, if that's a condition of plan approval, totally fine. Um, and also, obviously, we still have some cleanup items and agreements to do within our, within our plans themselves, but. I certainly understand.
There's a question from the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Want you to be more specific about exactly where this is, we cannot talk and even work.
If you cross, if you're going north on Pitney, when you cross the railroad tracks, it's immediately on your right, there's currently an old building there.
Across from the.
So where exactly would this substation be constructed in relation to Pitney Road? Could you please show us on the map?
Hit is along the top of that slide right there. Going south on your left and north on your right.
Up in. Is where the drive-ins for the uh, city, this is the Amtrak uh, rails right here. Uh, so Amtrak flows along this section and goes under the bridge and across the opposite side is where. The drive goes down into the water, uh, the water. I understand from what you said that this. Structure would be, uh. Let's see, the western best end would be a hundred and sixty feet in from the road. Yes, okay, and therefore, um, let's see here. How, would it be directly under the high wires? That are presently there, you know. Those wires will be taken down. That will be those wires that go down the right hand side of that plan. Those will be removed, so they'll be. Due to the west or left side on the end of where the wires are now. There's a car right near the the road there, you know. Yes, Tara, so these, right, and the lines also feed in along that property line, that line that goes straight down on the plan to the right. Um, so it's located, so the uh, Lancaster Tobacco Plant obviously is two. What is the possible middle of the substation to? The. Tobacco plant property, but there's a large hedge, uh, I can measure. Is, um. Two hundred twenty feet, uh, this property line is.
Of the existing pipe wires. That are coming across Pitney, uh, toward the. East, they would, uh, drop down into this subdivision.
They come. They come in and in from the garage. But, uh, so kind of parallel, they come in, they go parallel, but they feed right into the front of the taller. Uh, the units here, so this is kind of located more towards the center of that property. How large is the substation compared, we know where there's a smaller one already. Um, behind one, the one number adjacent to the. The layout plan has, you mentioned he's there. Are we able to zoom in on that at all? As soon as I can pull my other plan set out. The outside fenced portion of it will be. The fencing will be four hundred feet long, now the property itself is. Uh, way in excess of that, for the property here from one side to the other. Um, again, it's a hundred sixty feet in from from the roadway itself. Uh, from the axle where where the wires are. Um, so the area is fenced just for protect. Where the wires are. Seven five eight, I. About storm. You represent P P L, it it's, you have kind of a nebulous name. I'm I'm the editor, so the the property owners, we're working with P P L. Um, P P L is part of the group that's doing this, but. For this property remains in their, in their ownership, other than. What P P L's area you developed for, uh, for the record. So that's really the name that the ever centered people are hiding behind. I I'm not part of their name selections, um. You know, we are doing the main planning portion of this and. Um, I mean, I do have emails from Joseph Lookup, Frankie Finau that, um, that's. Something that they have intended to do upgrades here, uh, for the community as well. Um, not there to just serve the data center portion. Do you know anything about, um? Let's say, the the substation as far as, um. How it may affect, uh. People living nearby. In terms of sound or, um, air, things like that. Well, I may think about that, am I putting you on the spot? No, 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 it's fine, um, they have engineers that look at. For communities, so they do. They have the requirements they have to comply with. So that, uh, I know that those things are being done. Um, in relation to this, and as far as the adjacent properties that they are permitted to.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Right. And final land development plan, we've got a letter from DMA. Uh, dated September twenty nine.
Well, make the motion to approve the final land development plan. Twenty twenty five dash seventeen for Greenfield Road Owner LLC. Subject to the September twenty nine twenty five review letter from David Miller and Associates. Uh, the the address one forty three Pitney Road.
Second. First by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Gallagher. Any more common questions? You find a public comment? Here we now will call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. You close your abstentions, the motion passes.
Next, we have item seven E, point twenty five dash twenty seven Eli S and Nancy L King, deferral of subdivision. Five hundred Stratford Pike, yes or no?
Long stretch of first serving. Probably five hundred Stratford Pike. Me, any like King. Two properties, one is five hundred Stratford Pike, the other. Improvement, the co-proposed proposal is plan. Property five hundred, like twenty five acres. The intention is to, they tend to that twenty five acres and add it to the ones. So that is on these. Eastland, each of that, Westland here. There's a small field of barns, there's a senator. Yes, there's an island and. It's made like a meeting pass, be all Westland Peter, fifteen acres, ten acres would be added to the farm that is in both municipalities. And we would be running so, uh, but I think we say.
Motion to approve. We find that twenty seven Eli and Nathan L King, deferral of subdivision plan. Wesley P Welling here township at five hundred Stratford Pike. By Mr. Gallagher, back by Mr. Rudd.
And we do wanna have, um, signature blocks, correct tariff. Plan for the St. Peters.
In a second, uh. The signature blocks. You will establish, public comment, all those favor signify by saying aye. Most three sessions, the motion passes. Alright, supervisor discussion items, two others to update on, before the first one, tow policy false alarm piece.
The chief of police is working on an update to the tow policy to then take back to the emergency services committee at the November twentieth meeting. And Kim is working on the false alarm policy, again, to take back to the emergency services committee on November twenty. And then we'll read back to the board.
Maybe line painting policy. This.
Turn this over to Kim because she did all of the research on that.
Um, so basically, we created a line painting policy, uh, for the township to have a consistent. Because that's where there's roads with existing lines and there's roads without used lines. Um, so we we based this on publication two twelve, ten from ten dot, which is. That are. For all, all devices including. Um, so basically, we have. With the same, uh, markings, the maintenance and repainting of them, and then we have. The policy for the roads without. And it's established by publication two twelve as to the criteria that to.
That criteria is listed in the policy there. So five volumes. Roads at least twenty feet in width. Roads with a posted speed limit of thirty five miles per hour or higher. Documented crash histories. Visibility limitations, connections to major roads, and then electronic speed sign data.
New new roads.
So this is draft. This is not something that the board needs to act on tonight. It is something that the board can comment on by all means, provide comments to township staff, discuss at another meeting and potentially adopt.
As work, Kim, thank you. Sarah, where do we land with the development that had the? The last news is that we get pricing for.
We did. So for public work staff to repaint those lines, it would be sixteen hundred dollars. And for alpha control space to repaint those lines, it would be twenty four hundred dollars.
You say repaint, just black over time.
Repainting black was how much?
Sixteen hundred and some change for our staff to do it and twenty four hundred for outfits. However, I'm going to point out that if following this policy that Kim has developed, those roads would remain as double yellow. They exceed twenty feet in width.
That's what I was trying to figure out on the. Where did that twenty foot was finding again that he didn't see that.
It's in there. I'm. Or it could have been under the. Yeah. The nation, the nationwide standards.
Twenty feet is under twenty feet, you can restrict, you're allowed to restrict parking, you know, required to, you can restrict parking. Yeah, I haven't seen anything from Penn Dot on. So typically, W L lines are when you're restricted passing. That's the indication of double yellow is it's a no passing zone. So it's usually high speed and corners are when you require that. Not. They're linked to the MUTCD, so. What is the MUTCD?
The municipal. Or excuse me, manual on urban traffic controls and devices.
That's with. That DOT's document and which you know what year we're using?
Probably two twelve is that an option?
The Penn Dot's publication, but I'm the MT, is that the two thousand nine version you're looking at?
It does not have a, yes, I'm sorry, two thousand nine, yes.
I haven't read that one. That's where it's, yeah. The the purpose of those is. Curves, hills, approaches, great crossings, speed. You can do I, you can do multiple of them. It's got twenty feet. And average daily daily traffic of six thousand vehicles. So I read those initially in this policy as an and criteria, not as a for criteria. Where did it meet? All of those criteria would require a double yellow line, not meeting one of them. And that's when I skimmed through the MU.
Just saying twenty feet. Or more with and average daily traffic of six thousand vehicles per day or greater.
Or it's a no passing one. And arterials. So I that was minus one is if we have evaluation criteria is how you've got a higher volume, which under that is six thousand and a roadway width less than twenty feet. And a posted speed limit sign and crash history and visibility, and it's an arterial. Then we would consider doing it. And that's my understanding from you. Is that what your meaning of when you wrote this was these were, those are all the conditions to be met or just one of those has to be met?
Um, well, after traffics, after a study by the traffic engineer and the director of public work, I believe it would be. You know, an evaluation using this criteria, and I think it was one or more.
I don't think we need to have one or more. Might go by. At least three or four or more. Necessarily traffic engineer to evaluate it each time either. I think staff should be able to quickly check and see if it meets those typically. And if we need more information, we can get it, but I don't think we need that cost every time there's a road of. Many ones, all these small little. Rule, I mean subdivisions that aren't therefore through traffic. Don't need that. And when you have it, it just indicates to everyone else that, oh, this is a, this is a road I should be driving on. More so than they used to.
A far less expensive approach would be to put up no outlets.
Just don't need a sign at all. And the payment margins.
John Peeler, forty five ounce in your own. I think this is brought up by some complaints over towards your off course. We made the road and they put stripes down. Before you decide anything, if you have any questions, go look at it. I think that will change your mind. Think I live here.
I I drove through that neighborhood.
It. Wow, welcome to the big city. We live up, we're. And it makes on street parking worse. Because if you park on one side of the street, you don't have. You have to over the lines.
Exactly. So in most small neighborhoods, the the idea of traffic calming is you allow on street parking. You don't have a center line and it it forces the drivers to recognize that I have to share this road with oncoming traffic, parking traffic and pedestrians. And mentally you slow down when that happens. Whereas if you say, all right, there's a double yellow that you're not allowed to cross, the driver has to now try to stay in their lane. And they come too close to park cars, other cars and pedestrians, and they go faster.
It doesn't give you any freedom.
Correct.
And I would wonder. Proposal since the new development that came before you tonight, or does that need yellow lines?
Yeah, my perspective, if it's not a through road or designed to be a through road, it doesn't need lines at all. And if there ends up being higher volumes of traffic, the best thing to do is mark your outside parking and restrict the total lane width in the middle to force traffic to slow down. It's a neighborhood near my house, Westland Peter, where my kids, we walk frequently and it's you're allowed to park two cars on there. The cart path is only sixteen feet. And there's. And you have to go real slow because if anyone's coming around the corner, you're going to hit them. So it forces you to go slow. It's a traffic. Not having a double yellow slows down cars in the neighborhood. That's my perspective.
I appreciate the effort the township is going to and trying to solve the problem.
Yeah, our current current policy is to paint double yellow. Which I personally disagreed with in the past and continue to.
Thank you for reviewing. Thank you.
And I'd be looking at it from purely as a safety factor. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'd have to, I have to listen to what Penn Dot or some other experts that that studied that. I live on a street that is nice and wide. It has slanted curbs. People constantly park on the side of not far enough to the side. There's no lines. So you you either have to make sure you you stop and let the other car through or go. Double line to me just gives you a real visual line. This is your side of the road that. So it's almost could be. There's only perspective. I know I have to go over more because I see where the middle of the road is. So and the neighborhood in question, I didn't drive it and I saw how wide it is. It's one of those big neighborhoods, big yards, really wide road. And I think we've been told the wider the road, the faster the cars go. So I think a double line is supposed to give you a little more perspective on what side of the road you're supposed to be on. I I kind of just, again, missed my own perspective. You could have a very young driver who's new and not real experienced. You could have some older driver. The way they've used the paint now, it really comes out. I mean, you see it, you know, that that headlight hits it. Could I understand the fact that aesthetically they don't like it? I I can. I really can. And I do think that the no outlet sign could help with people taking the wrong. You know, taking a road, thinking it's going somewhere else because, oh, if it's a double line, maybe that's a bigger road that goes out someplace and maybe I'll get there. But a a discriminating line painting policy that can take these multiple measures in place, I I think that's great. I appreciate him putting that together and.
I'd go through two.
Do you like the lines or not?
I like them on Millcross, don't you?
Yeah.
That's a dangerous road. And that really you show, you know, gives you that. It's there's the purpose right there.
That's a lot different, you know.
It is, yeah.
That's the idea it shows. Because what you're indicating, this is a current problem with your traffic engineers and your Penn Dot guidelines. Anyway, they're designed for how do we get cars through an area as fast as possible? But that's their objective as opposed to the objective of the people who live there of, I want the cars to go through slower. So that my kids can ride their bike in the street. Traffic engineer is not considering those. Penn Dot is not considering your pedestrians. They're saying, how do I move cars through safely? Double yellow line is when cars are moving fast. It indicates you can't move into the other lane. You don't want that to happen if you want slow cars in the neighborhood. So. Our policy should be set up for we want neighborhoods that have slow traffic so that you can share the road with your pedestrians, not so that you can move cars through as fast as possible. So as long as we have an evaluation criteria that that goes through, to me, all of these would would really have to check. Or the majority of them would have to check to say, hey, we need double yellow lines here. The places where, and this is one where we've done since the staff had shifted the policy because I don't think the board ever approved a policy like this in the past. It was merely an internal staff policy. Based off of majority decisions of the board to do this in Eastwood and others in other neighborhoods that had come up. And then it shifted to an internal policy. Now from here on out, we do this. And now we're hearing from this neighborhood in particular, but just because we didn't hear as many people from those come to meetings after we paved other neighborhoods, doesn't mean it's like it. May may mean that they don't think they can come to a meeting and do anything about it. So I'm glad that this neighborhood came. More neighborhoods should come if if.
Right, if if there's a complaint, you can't do anything about it until you hear it.
Yep. So this is one that came to us, but I think this is time to look at it and say, let's have a policy that the board weighs in on that says, here's when you should be painting extra extra lines in a neighborhood and ask the, there should be a high bar that we have to meet that shows that there's a lot of speeding going on and it's unsafe as opposed because what we're doing by painting double yellow lines is making it unsafe for the pedestrians in a small neighborhood.
Let's be posted. How how will?
Well, we're not, we're not painting again until next year. So we do have a look at a time. We have a few other projects.
I feedback the more and more of the criteria. The second criteria we have is average daily traffic. I want to specify those numbers are in the UTCD. Roadway width, posted speed limit. Crash history, visibility limitations, connections to major roads. Our data from electronic speech signs. And then it's. I'd recommend having another meeting that talked about painting white lines on the outside as a interim step if some of those conditions are met first. That designates here's where there's parking, here's where the cars. So the difference is those designate, here's where the cars shouldn't be as opposed to the double yellow, here's where the cars should be or have to be.
So when I went through that neighborhood, there was a person that parked along the road and there was about four feet between his door and the double yellow line. So despite that action, I'm willing slower because I don't want to go ahead. I don't want some car coming the other way.
To Ethan's point, if there was a white line, do you think they would have been over for getting closer to the front yard of who's ever.
Yeah. But even in some of those, because the other problem we have is most of the older subdivisions just have, the roads are way too large. They don't need to be that large anyway. It's just a holdover from a previous style of development that we don't need. When it comes time to repay them, it's just way more expensive every single time. You know, looking back at the staff on the road line painting policy. On that discussion item, is it something that we want them looking at since line painting is done for the year or putting up some money into a fund to remediate the places where we made the neighborhoods more unsafe?
I don't think we should make that conclusion.
We're in that budget price more of, let's say, which roads we're going to unpaint. But is that something that we would want to entertain doing all next year during repainting season?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So at least earmark. In the line painting budget for maybe have a process whereby people could let us know with more than a few people at a meeting, but maybe circulate a petition and say, hey, we want to undo this. There hasn't been many, but we've done a few since staff had changed the policy a few years ago. Until now, there's been a few. Things have been repaved, they've been painted, so it's not many.
Was Charlie going to look into that? How many were?
He did. He did look into how many other. However, the cost I gave you was only for the development.
That was so many feet that would have surrounded.
So many linear.
Yeah. Policy going forward. I I agree, multi measures, maybe four. What we do about existing ones, that's that's going to take some discussion. Because obviously there may be neighborhoods that are significantly painted.
Frequency of pain, what's the callback period when they can actually come in and say our line shouldn't have been painted, so. Those are the questions that need to come up.
Yeah, it's only, so the one would be get the numbers of how many how many feet of roads that are painted this way. But if we if we were able to say to residents coming in, hey, your average daily traffic is ten thousand. You've got a short roadway lift. You have a supposed speed limit of forty five. You've got crashes on the road. You got curves. That's why we painted the double yellow lines. I think they would listen to that as opposed to your last, we wanted to. Though I think we're discussing at the budget workshop. All right. Any other supervisor discussion items? Dates on the Park Foundation. If there's nothing else, move on to item nine, A approval of. Approval of updated cooperation agreement with High Associates for R A C P funding.
The board entered into an agreement, cooperation agreement with High Associates. For the received $11 million. That was for the Greenfield Lot One, Four and Five site. Governor Shapiro increased that funding by another $4 million and therefore this is a an addendum to that agreement to account for that additional funding. This has been reviewed by the solicitor and. Should the board agree to sign it, she is also in agreement.
Questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve the updated cooperation agreement with High Associates for the RACP funding. Reflecting an additional four million for.
First by Mr. Moore, and second Thornton, but second by Mr. Reddick. Any comments, public comment?
Redevelopment assistance, cap program.
This is for.
Yeah, this was for the site improvements at. Greenfield Lot One, Four and Five, which are essentially complete.
Willow Road.
Yeah, where the. There's a vacant building that's going in as a industrial building of about. Two hundred twenty thousand square feet where cattle works and the soil and then where the apartments are.
She's the end of. It's the end of the RACP funding.
All right, we have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed or abstentions, motion passes. And a nine B resolution for local shared town grant application for fire apparatus. The Lafayette Hand to Hand Fire Companies.
At your last meeting, we discussed whether or not the township should apply on behalf of. Or in conjunction with Burdenham Fire Company and Lafayette Fire Company for apparatus in the amount of one million dollars. And we needed a resolution from the board in order to do that. The total. Cost for those two fire companies is three point three million dollars and so. The resolution provides that both Kim and I can sign off and execute any agreements should the funding come through.
I'm going to motion to approve the resolution, but all share grant application. Name out of one million dollars, due to have Tara and Kim to act as signatories. Second.
Both by Mr. Gouda, second by Mr. Reddick. Any forward comment, public comment? Favor signify by saying aye. And I see appointment Emergency Services Committee alternate for Lafayette Fire Company, Mr. Jeff Keen.
We received an email from the president of Lafayette Fire Company. Change in leadership at the fire company. They wish to have the board appoint Jeff Keen as the alternate. To fulfill the term that was occupied by Scott.
Motion to appoint Jeff Keens on the Emergency Service Committee.
There are second, second, motion by Mr. Thornton, second by Mr. Reddick. For comment, public comment? All those in favor signify by standing aye, aye, opposed or abstentions, motion passes. Item nine D, that was bid for.
A few meetings ago, we informed you that the bid process was moving forward for the Willow Road Culvert. This is the culvert that is directly across from Oscar's. Some issues with that culvert that were found a few years ago and we had. Design of the new culvert and there would be a connection of the walking trail from Lot Five to Lot One of Greenfield North. There's an agreement that the Board of Supervisors has as a condition of approval for Lot Five. That indicates the township would do the design and seek the permitting. And then install the culvert and then there will be a reimbursement for portion of the culvert that carries the trail. From Lot One to Lot Five by High Associates. We did put that out to bid. The lowest bid came back at four hundred twenty one thousand, one hundred forty six dollars and ninety four cents. In the twenty twenty five budget, there was four hundred and one thousand dollars budgeted for this project. Given the time and the actual timeline that the consultant or the contractor can make this project happen, this project would not happen in twenty twenty five. We would just get to contract signing at the just before Thanksgiving and then a contract would actually, the construction would actually start in twenty twenty six. So if the board wishes to move forward with this, we would need to budget four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars as a round number. To. The capital fund for this project. And so if you agree to move forward, you should accept the lowest bid and then we'll move forward in budgeting.
With the reimbursement amount.
Um, it's actually, we have to do it by the percentage of the piece that would be covered by the trail. Go over the core.
Do you have a timeline on? How long that culvert could last?
There is a timeline actually on the agreement that we have with High as to how fast we need to move on replacing the culvert. And that was a five-year timeline. I do not. Have the engineers report in front of me. As to how long the culvert could last. There are some. Deficiencies in the culvert currently. If you drive by there, that need to be addressed.
Yes, over needs to be repaired. Um, and we also wanted to extend it. So we can make that connection trail between the properties. So the other one is, if we were to rebid. In a few months, do you think we'd be getting lower bid numbers than we did for this bid?
Right, so if we put it out to bid in winter, um, one of the requests of the easement. For Oscars was that we we have the project completed before May. Because that's their busy time of year and so. This allows for us to get that this substantially completed project by April, so. If we were to rebid, we would likely have to wait until fall of next year. And honestly, my crystal ball is as good as yours with going up to bed.
Only about twenty three grand above the current budget, um, but given the timing, we'd have to. Not do it this year and put it in the next year's budget with a a known amount at that point. Or thoughts?
I agree. Twenty four thousand over, I don't know how you're going to get there. In this environment. I could be wrong, but.
Not in the short term anyways.
See, not in the short term.
Well, I'd like to take a motion to accept the lowest bid then.
Do you motion to accept the Miller Soil Solutions LLC for the Willow. Road culvert replacement and mapping four hundred twenty four thousand, one hundred forty six dollars and ninety four cents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rod, second by Mr. Thornton, any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes. Item nine E, request for Lafayette Fire Company to assist with the Greenfield Whoville activities.
Yes, we.
Were we going to be there?
Here tonight.
We received a request for fire police and fire. Ask to be at the Hu- Whoville activities in December fourth in Greenfield. This would need to be added to the events list so that there is coverage under their workers call.
Right.
Who's sponsoring it?
This is a Greenfield sponsored event.
I'll attend a motion.
Do you motion to. Approve the request from Greenfield Langston. Reuse of our fire police. Our fire police being Lafayette. Fire police for the December fourth. Whoville winter event.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rod, second by Mr. Thornton, any board comment or questions? Public comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed or abstentions, motion passes. I've been fed managers report.
We're going to quickly update. So we did get a number of. Chapterings of the plan and Roger does sit on that steering committee. Staff has gone through that as well as the steering committee has provided comments back to the consultant. We did receive an updated version, I believe. Friday, I have not yet gotten through that version. It's approximately a hundred and fifteen pages. I found in the original copy some substantially incomplete sections and. A lack of cohesiveness in the general document and so I I do have a concern that we will not be completed. With a document that is satisfactory by the end of the year, but we are working towards that.
Yeah. Anything else from the staff? All right, any final public comment?
Uh, yeah, uh, next also, I'm representing please stand with specialties by two twenty five called Philadelphia Bike. Um, I didn't see it in the agenda for tonight, but I believe there was a stormwater management plan that was supposed to be presented to. Board of Supervisors for signing today.
It's it's actually in the back for signature.
I just wanted to make sure it was. Well, they know how this process works, so I.
Yeah.
We'll sign it and get it to. Any other public comment?
Yes, sir. This is pretty nice, did like a survey. From township residents and you know what I'm talking about? That was, was ever released or anything?
Yeah. Being incorporated in the comment. Or being used to direct some of the implementation for that.
At your last meeting. There was something in regards to land use, you put some land in. And then out, I just want to ask two questions, the the elementary school, the Smoketown Elementary School and the Menne light school. So what happened there? Like, what does this mean? Like, what are those properties currently? Zoned or what changes did you just do that last meeting that what what does it, what are the implications of what happened that last time? For those properties?
So the, let's start with the Smoketown property, the Smoketown, I called Smoketown Elementary, which is currently old. Um, that property is zoned Village General, that's the zoning. But it was always within the urban growth boundary. The changes that were adopted by the board. And forwarded to the county planning commission were changes in the growth boundary and that property did not change. That was always within the growth boundary.
So that's a property that assume will probably be sold within five years.
I do not know what the the school is intending to do with it at this point. Fritz Leola Elementary. In the fall of twenty twenty six. Leola will move back to the Leola and Fritz will move in. It's the intent of the school district to keep Fritz in there. For approximately two years. But I don't know how set of a time frame that is. Um, and then after that, the school district has not indicated what they will do with the.
So it's got a long term as far, I mean, in my mind, I feel like it almost seemed like in the neighborhood that the default mode is telling. Like it seems like if you have open space. That there, it it seems like there is not much hesitation to go ahead and move. Housing into that. I mean, I kind of see there's already plans in place. Coming in off Eastbrook Road there, there's there's going to be housing. I mean, the good small just trying to get something done in there. Uh, I think the fencer fellow. No free fencing.
Yeah, I did see that.
I think the town was asking for how you put it there. So I kind of go, it was kind of the visionist. From Eastbrook Road, moving west all the way up. To to the Smoketown. I mean, is that kind of what seems to be coming?
Well, the the Village General allows for housing, but it also allows for businesses as well. And I mean, Roarers takes up a large portion of property along that stretch as does, you know, smaller businesses like the barber shop and the hair salon. And there's, there's a number of businesses throughout there.
I understand what you're saying too. I mean, certainly we've done a little bit of advanced work on housing. Housing is an issue everywhere. Uh, where people want to live, we have a a lot of people that drive to our township. Who work here. Uh, was it? Early ninety percent? Of the people that work here.
Ninety three percent of the people who work here drive here.
Drive here. So that's, that's more traffic in from from farther places in just general housing needs, but. You know, we could encourage it, but developers are the ones that are, you know, have their. Uh, pulse uh, on what what are the trends, where is the housing needed? We don't want to take new farmland. We want to use developed land for things like that, not always that, but. If there can be quality housing that fits our, you know, our village, it's like, you know, you're looking at in essentially Whitmer. Uh, near the school, I mean, those are. Uh, those market forces are kind of, you know, what do people need? What are they asking for? Uh, what can our services provide for?
It it seems like though, like the housing kind of jumps ahead of. Of the infrastructure oftentimes, we since we sold the cows in twenty nineteen and since I've been, I've been trucking, I get all over the county and it's like right around here. It's bad. I mean, it's, you get down to the southern end and they have highways running down through there, but they, it's like, it's, it's nice. And right around here, it just seems like the roads, I mean, you have choke points all over the place and. It also can be trapped.
Both Philadelphia and Lincoln High.
Yeah, yeah.
It puts a lot of, it puts a lot of traffic in here. And, yeah, and so what? This board has done over the last. Couple years, we're, we're looking at the, we're, we're looking at the infill property, so. This property that E G owns, that, that's, that's an infill property. So we put ten houses in there makes far better sense than to go out behind steamship. And and allow somebody to put houses in there, which this board won't allow that. But we, we will look at a case by case base. Basis on infill properties.
Yeah, I feel like you guys are probably sort of between a rock and a hard place. Often you have pressures from all around. Even the southern end has two twenty two, four seventy two, thirty seventy two, they have the highways running down through there too. It's just like they've kind of not opened up. To the. The house wreckers as much, yeah, it just, I feel like it's, it's only getting worse. Right here, it's, it's like it's. Forty. The point is enough enough to a certain degree.
Another perspective is we. My goal is to allow as many uses as makes sense on property and let the property owner figure out what's the best use for them. So part of that is. As opposed to restricting and saying you can only have a single family house, we allow accessory dwelling units. So if you want to have two, you can, or you can have one. Same amount of space, you're, you're restricted by your space. So all our zoning is around, where is the infrastructure? Where do we have sewer? Where do we have existing roads? And where do people want to work? And the problem we have is we have, you know, chunks of our. Developed area that are vacant and rundown properties. Because the market is saying the current uses you've allowed there, we don't, we, we can't make money with us. So we have rundown properties in some of those areas. So how, how can we open up? What we did with Rockville was we just allowed more uses. And the market said, okay, now. and the market said, okay, now we can do that, we need a all that red area needs to be open. Well, not only just housing, but also smaller commercial mom and pop shops need to be allowed and not just big box stores.
Because the township's responsibility is to do that the owner has the ability to sell. Because what you, what they, you know what I mean, like they could have sold, they could have moved the property and had something else come in there, maybe if they would have lowered, but instead they got what they wanted, you know, they got a new use for it, which brought the property value up.
Property value hasn't come up yet, they actually, previous owners of that property sued for reassessment dropped the property value by over $20 million, which was a functional 10% tax increase on everyone else in the township when they did that. So when you have these large parcels that become devalued, they sue the county for reassessment. And then everyone else's tax bill has to make up the difference, so it saves the rest of the taxpayers money if you can take that property and bring it back to its higher value than it used to be.
An example on that one were several different suitors for the property, but they fell through. You know, and there's the school district suddenly without a, a significant piece of revenue, obviously township. So it was, I think the board was really looking and say, hey, what can we do, this is infill property to the max. Who's, who's interested in it? And those changes or mixed use really finally brought somebody, but there were others before that and they, they didn't work out. And there, there sits a vacant, all these vacant stores.
Yeah, 500 units affect the school district to the point where we'll need, that we'll need yet another yet another school expansion?
I don't think so, quite honestly, I think there's actually been a reduction in the number of schools.
The projection of school age children is actually flatter going down.
Which causes all kinds of future
Hopefully that'll change, destabilizes, but the demographic trends are not looking good unless we can get more school age children moving in. So in other municipalities, I've seen townships try to restrict, they say we want 50, we want older retirement communities. Which only gets you so far until the demographic shift. Ideally, we want a vibrant community with young families, older families, older folks, younger folks, so that we can have a community that, that self sustains and isn't relying on people to continually come in and out of the township to make it survive. But right now, we still have a transient community coming through because of our highways. But our demographics are better than most of the towns, other townships around us.
An excellent example is the struggle and the challenge that our volunteer fire companies have with getting volunteers and, and, and you know, when you see a vibrant volunteer fire force, there's, there's a lot of young people involved and, and you need young people to do that. And you know, they've all talked about people that have been there for a very long time, can't fight fires like they used to, you know, you need that good influx, as Ethan said, a good mix. So yeah, we don't have quite the problems that some other places have, because I see some other developments of several hundred houses. And I don't know how those school districts are, you know, you could just adjust to that, but I appreciate what you're saying.
Great, thanks for your time. Thank you for the questions. All right, any other final comments? If you have a motion to adjourn. Second, public comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Your adjournments, we'll see it next